We'll go ahead and get started. Thank you for coming tonight. Please stand for prayer and pledge. We have Pastor Steve here to do our prayers.
Lord, I again, I thank you for your love and your grace, and I thank you for the men and women that give their time and talents, and Lord continue to bless them, continue to work in their hearts and their minds. And Lord, we just thank you for the village, and we thank you for all the things that you've done. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, Steve's done about five minutes. I said, Steve's done about five minutes already. Roll call, Cheryl.
Bailey.
Here.
Bassett.
Here.
Beverly.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Eglin.
Here.
Oh, you have your May 5th regular council meeting minutes in your packet. Any changes, corrections?
Make a motion to approve as written.
Second.
Roll call.
Eglin. Yes. Martin.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yep.
Bassett.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yep.
Approval of bills listed in your packet.
What was the rock automotive, rock automotive bill for the during the what all got repaired? Thirty-five hundred dollars?
The transfer case and the drive shaft.
Oh, and a transmission.
That's a lot of money in that. Should we consider getting rid of it down the road here shortly?
I probably would if something else would go out that's major.
Yeah.
But that car is still a pretty good car. I mean, my van's got the same motor in it. I've got 235,000 miles on my motor.
But it's a 12 and
Yeah, so we might.
The other Cruisers, you know, they weren't, they weren't that old, and we had to replace them, so. Because we, we have spent a lot of money on that purple car.
No, we haven't.
Okay.
Splash pad lighting changed, flies electric. What was that all about?
Uh, two wall packs, one above the mechanic door, one above the restroom door. The original lighting port, they only came on if power was to go out. They were on a battery backup. So there was no lighting over the restroom. Something kind of got overlooked in the, in the actual beginning drawings of everything. These are also on the, on the battery backups as well.
What was the lab work mobile analyticals for almost 2300? Where was that?
My side. It's just our weekly lab sampling between the wastewater department and the water department.
Oh, I didn't think it was that high.
Any other questions?
Make a motion to pay the bills.
Second.
Roll call.
Beverly.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Martin. Bailey.
Yes.
Eglin.
Yes.
All right, boards and commissions. Nobody met on that. We got council committee reports. I think you had a personnel and your depth this out. You see that for me?
Yeah, I was almost no man of Martin, but I got him.
I always turn them in. This is pretty later.
Yeah, I know. For me it is. Actually, thanks for Cheryl for reminding me. Yep, so we discussed some raises. People had some questions on those. Also discussed personnel manual. A couple topics Cheryl wanted to get addressed. She's working on updating it, and she was gonna have the, those in the packet when she has the personnel manual for us to look at.
Do we need to vote on that raise, or will that be written into the ordinance that we're just heard that will be approved tonight?
Yes, as you say. So we're not? I can put it in this one that has everybody, or do it myself, whichever you guys want. Here.
We need to pass it.
Yeah.
There's a motion for it. Just do a vote tonight.
Okay. Do we need, do we just make a motion with that though?
Yeah.
And make a motion to add this raise to the minutes tonight? The ordinance?
Could be voted on.
To be voted on.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll say.
Roll call.
Bailey.
Yep.
Uh, Bassett.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yep.
Miller.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Eglin.
Yes.
Any other questions about the personnel meeting?
Backing up to last week, Cheryl found that we'd vacated that street already. The one that, Rakestraw Street, so north of Oden. It was vacated in 1991. So have Jared call me tomorrow. She said he has concerns about this survey.
Sure.
All right, now administrators report.
Uh, I don't really have anything other than they had our annual CDBG meeting at the commissioner's office today. Commissioners did select our one critical infrastructure application for the Columbia and Hager water main replacement we're trying to, trying to get for next year. Splash pad opened on Thursday, last Thursday. Seems to be a jakeable community.
What is this?
Do you have some punch list items on that splash pad?
We did.
What's broken on it now? What's broken on it now?
It's broken?
No, I was just, I was down there on Thursday or Friday watching a baseball game, and there's a lot of water. And I know the walkway is supposed to slope away, but is there any way that they can point those more towards the middle? I know the windows kind of blown that way a little bit too.
Baseball field side there?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a four inch tile. We ended up putting that tile in late in the game, and then they put that small little catch basin by the can for room. But really, the best way, I think, to really get that water to drain into that four inches, if we, that's all clay. It's got a small little swale there, and it's kind of laced there. Eventually goes away. I don't know if we could dig all that out, and I really want to protect a rock there.
But is the spray, the spray feature shouldn't be spraying the water out that far into the walkway.
Correct.
I think it's recirculating, so it shouldn't be pointing more towards the middle, so it doesn't make it to the walkway. I think the rainwater is supposed to run off, but
Yeah, we got that. It's got an extra 10 foot of flat concrete. The pad itself is all tapered to the middle.
Right. The walkway is supposed to taper, I think you said, 1%, or more away from the, the feature.
Yeah. I think we're getting a lot of residual from that bucket when it dumps. It splashes clear out there, and it runs off.
Are you seeing it run off into the parking lot as well? I mean, I walked by there, and it was running in that direction as well.
In the parking lot?
Yeah.
There's a couple features, right?
The grass was all white, because I commented to my husband about it. I'm like, ooh, that, that's gonna be hard to grow grass.
About, so like, there's a feature right by the can for, that's got like the turbine, you know, like a, and that splashes water into the, into the grass there. And then there's a one that shoots out.
That's the one that I was, the one left of the slide if you're facing for the baseball.
Yeah, I think it's the snail, maybe? We can, we can turn those down by adjusting the valves, so they don't spray.
I know. You direct them like more towards the middle, so it doesn't spray.
There's no way to adjust them. It's all Are they independent? Each feature independently controlled? Yeah, there's a valve for everything. Because if you have them running, I mean, on Thursday when they were running, they were definitely going. And then it like, I know the rainwater has to slope away, so it doesn't go into the system. But that grass is gonna get that treated water and not grow. It's grown good now?
Wow. I, I was watching the three, three kids go into the mud by that part. I holler at them.
Electric fence is my suggestion. I mean, what do you, what do we do?
We talked about fence or something.
There's no fence or something?
Well, has the entire thing must be fenced in.
No, I mean, it's supposed to be open. We don't want a fence in there, lock it up. It's supposed to be
I can see a fence on three sides of it to keep them going from the grass, you know, when the grass starts getting cut back onto the pad. But I don't think it'd be wise to fence it off where the pavilion area is. I can see three sides.
Just until it cracks.
You don't think anybody will vandalize or anything while it's down here?
Lot of camera. Lot of cameras.
Oh, okay. As long as we can see it, we don't care. We just tore up. What's wrong with it now? It's all over Facebook. A bucket or a wing or something is broke?
It's not broke. It just, I don't know, it needs lubrication or what it is.
It's not working?
It, it works. It works. I was down, I'm down there all the time. It, it works. It's just, it's not, the operation, it's not as smooth when it dumps. It kind of has some sticky positions to it. I've already put a call into them, and they'll, they'll send out a technician and do what they need to do. I mean, it's, it's kind of, it's bound to happen, brand new. You know, you have kids climbing on fixtures that they should be climbing on, and it's what it is, and you found it, it broke. It's awful expensive. This one is though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, it's still busy.
Well, I know the, the defiance administrator had walked through his kids were at the junior high track meet. He complimented us on the splash pad, and he's recommended a fence, because all the kids will run through the grass and, you know, different things, and back in the splash pad, their kids are a lot of towers and stuff. But he said it looked very nice, you know, with what they've had. He said they've made some improvements to theirs over time, as they've seen things change, so we'll be discussing. Is there any other street projects going on, start firing up? I don't know what water.
I did notice that Chaplain did on the, was it, what was the other street? That looks really good.
Our street.
They look good.
Seen Sweeper out running. Have you liked it?
Yeah. I came today for training. They kind of got trained on the fly by themselves last week, wasn't it, so. Seems to be working pretty well.
Any other questions for Cory? All right, we will move on to the solicitors report. Rachel.
We have a final reading of ordinance 2025-07 by caption, only amending pay ranges including caning.
That's what you're gonna add the 8% on also. So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Bailey.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Beverly.
No.
Eglin.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Second reading of ordinance 2025-08 by caption, only amending section 1165.09 of the Hicksville Codified Ordinances for paying parking and storage of certain vehicles. Second reading of ordinance 2025-09 by caption, only amending section 95.06 of Hicksville Codified Ordinances pertaining to failure to comply remedy of municipality. You have second reading of ordinance 2025-10 by caption, only amending section 505.13 of the Hicksville Codified Ordinances pertaining to keeping animals in your dwellings.
Can that one get chickens changed to poultry?
Yes, sorry. Yes, you did send that to me.
And then the only other thing I was thinking of with 4H, I don't know how many individuals in town are in 4H that would have animals, but what do you guys feel about rabbits? If they're housed, you know, obviously in a cage, you know, if they wanted to do a 4H project. Basically, the way they would ride them housed, they wouldn't be able to do that anymore.
Just gonna be 100 feet away from somebody's house? Rabbit pen gets a little stinky in the winter time, summertime.
Yeah, and I agree that it shouldn't still be 100 feet, but at this point, we're taking it out completely. And although not every property would even be able to have it because of the 100 feet, there are some that would.
True.
So I didn't know. I wanted to bring it up, you know, before we got to the
I think it should be wrapped in. A lot of people like bunnies.
Yeah. Anybody else have opinions on that?
None of the rabbits. I was just kind of curious, where did we land with people getting grandfathered in? Not, and where were we at?
Did you? I did.
I thought so.
I thought he was gonna come tonight.
I asked him about it today. And I think, well, he explained it to me that it would ride until January 1.
And that's when the new permitting would start grad.
So then they would have until January 1st to get rid of anything that didn't qualify under this.
And then apply for their, like it says, yearly permit fee, but it would be a yearly application for a permit, because that would be a $500 would be.
Is that established? Is it in writing?
It is in the ordinance, the 25, or the grandfather.
Then you do January 1, and how you're not gonna grandfather, and
Not currently.
That really should, that should be in there.
I was asking at the end of the day today about it. I knew that was a question from
There's a couple of them. You're gonna have a fight.
No, I'm not gonna have a fight.
Somebody's gonna have a fight.
We're gonna chill.
Does he have a copy of that permit, what that would look like?
I don't know.
I'd like to see that ahead of time. I think he got, got that idea from another village, so I don't know.
I don't hold that then. It's, I'm sure it's online somewhere.
Probably. It was the one that you sent me that did not have a village next to it.
What do you mean?
You had text me the ordinances that you'd gotten from the different villages. It was the one that did not have a village next to it.
This was taken from Archbould, or this is taken from Striker, this was taken
Like it wasn't taken from another village's ordinance.
Oh, okay. I'd have to look at, I had to look at the numbers here months ago.
Yes, no, I know. You'd send it to me, and I looked, and I was like, oh, this is
And that's specifically for the
Yeah, yeah.
I'll take a look when we're done with the meeting.
For the rabbits, it does say hooked animals is what I changed it to. I don't know if rabbits
Rabbits don't have hooves, that's true.
So actually, I don't know. We crossed out all the other animals, and just the hooked animals, so.
Yeah, I actually will look at that, because I see it crossed out, but that
Yes, yeah. That was in the initial, the original ordinance, and then we just put in hooked animals.
Well, it was requested that chickens be, be marked out and, and put as poultry, so we could, can we just cross out the
Where'd they say the rabbit?
Can we just cross out, or put rabbit back in behind poultry?
Yeah.
That sound okay to everybody?
Hope I don't be ruining my dogs.
That's next, Fisher. That's next.
Air secluded from this.
His has hooves. Cloven hooves.
Thank you, Rachel, for that.
Yeah, I made those changes, so I think it does. First reading of ordinance 2025-11 by caption, only zoning 125 North Main Street from commercial to residential and declaring an emergency.
You want me to suspend the rules?
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Miller.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yep.
Bassett.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Eglin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Second and final reading of ordinance 2025-11 by caption, only zoning 125 North Main Street from commercial to residential and declaring emergency.
Roll call.
Second.
Bailey.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yep. Yes.
Yes. Martin.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
And first reading of resolution 2025-09 by caption, only tender contract with fencing contracting LLC for the Elm Street Water Main Replacement Project and declaring emergency.
I want to suspend the rules.
Sorry.
Have Cory, have you or, or your engineers checked Benson's background?
Yeah, we've used them.
Okay.
We've dated that needful separation.
Roll call.
Miller. Martin.
Yes.
Eglin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Second and final reading of resolution 2025-09 by caption, only tender contract with fencing contracting LLC for the Elm Street Water Main Replacement Project and declaring emergency.
So move. Second. Roll call.
Bailey.
Yes.
Eglin.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Rachel. Very good. We are up to, thanks Rachel, department head reports. Who wants to go first? Anybody? Fisher, I mean, sorry, not you. All right.
I have nothing.
I don't really have much either. Just things that are going on next door is, I got a couple guys coming out to fix our tanker truck tomorrow. It's not out of service, but there was an air leak in one, in the apparatus underneath. Guy came out over the weekend and looked at it, and he's sending a guy tomorrow. Then we have one of our trucks getting fixed next week, 504, got a minor issue with that with the AC, so that's getting fixed as well. He's gonna call me on Friday with a new date of when he's gonna come next week. So we'll repair it in. Our apparatus is a stand-up, making sure that they're able to go out the door when we need them, so that's the reason for the repairs. Now that one of these pairs, repairs put the trucks out of service, but it's better to nip them in the bud before it get worse. Other than that, our annual first grade truck rides is Wednesday. We're doing that at 1:00. Other than that, on the fire department side, we're just preparing for the breakfast that's gonna be in a couple weeks. No other new business is going on as far as the fire department goes, at least on the fire side. I can't speak for EMS side, but other than that, I don't have anything.
Generator? How'd that go today?
According to Limper, they started doing the electrical work or whatever to, to get that up and ready. The guy was out here today. Stacy said that he was, he was out there working on it, getting it to where it needs to be. He didn't go into great detail as far as where he was with that.
What about the tornado siren?
The tornado siren, I haven't heard anything. The last contact is when I told y'all that I reached out to Cory to the place that come out. Again, like I said, the park siren works, but then that Saturday, it didn't work. This past Saturday, they had a dead alarm, which it shouldn't, but I don't know. I think it's, whenever alarms, like I said, when it didn't alarm, I contacted Cory. Cory got ahold of the guys, and they're supposed to come out, either look at it or how it, but me and Cory had not been in conversations.
I saw there was a bill.
Yeah, they had come out and diagnosed it, and they didn't find any electrical issues with it, but the antenna on the side of it, and it gets its signal just from the repeater in there. It was broken and it's missing, so it's been on order. So as soon as it shows up, they'll install it, and I'm very, very hopeful they'll have it before the first Saturday next month, so we know. But they, they ran it at the panel to make sure it enunciates, and it rotates, and it did. So that means it's just not getting its signal from the repeater. But they do recommend us to relocate that dumpster, because that pole's getting beat up from when they dropped the dumpster. It's smacking into that pole where the sirens on top of. I don't know where to, that'll be up to these guys, wherever they want to put the dumpster.
We should probably get on that.
I don't know a good location for it.
Yeah, I think we jumped your trash company, just tell them that when they dump it next, say somewhere else. I think that might be easy business, you know what I'm saying, as far as that goes. I think that's an easy, quick fix. So they come out every other Wednesday to dump that, that dumpster, so we could put a call in and just tell them to relocate it, and where we desire for it to be at. I think that's easy.
Yeah, get that done before this Wednesday.
Put it someplace where it's easy for that truck to get to, so that heavy truck's not twisting around back there on your asphalt.
Yeah, it would, it would be on them as far as getting into the parking lot and the, you know, the convenience or easiness for them to get in and out. So they would have, they would decide that. But we could, we could put that smoke signal out there and just say, hey, we need to possibly relocate this dumpster. And I think that's an easy fix.
I have a couple quick things. We got a parade coming up Monday, right? They got the parade.
Parade. Parade.
I think they just turned it in today or something, but
We're doing, then the flags, we're putting flags out on Thursday. We're doing that at 6:00.
Then the fireworks, did you get that signed off for the
We're completing that this evening, and I'm going to fax it in the morning to the appropriate parties.
Cool. Thank you. I follow protocol on that with all the safety and everything for the fireworks and stuff, so.
Well, I just had to have signatures between myself and, and Mark. He said he was gonna sign it as soon as this was over, and then I'll have to do a fax.
Thank you. You have a question for Derek? All right. Thank you, Derek.
Thanks.
Two names to bring to you tonight. Seems like I'm bringing you guys' names a lot here lately, so not a bad thing. First guy you guys have already approved, but he had told, sent me a text message a while back and saying that he was probably gonna get it out of EMS. He sent me another text message on Saturday saying, you know what, I worked way too hard to become a paramedic for me not to use this, so he's gonna give me, he's gonna give me some, some hours per month. He is another paramedic. He's out of Edging from Williams County. He's been a paramedic for 15 years. Talked to him yesterday. I think if you guys go ahead and re-prove, the, the thought process is, is that anything north of 249, if he's available, and he's going to respond, and I will, and I will continue to, to do 249, so. He does work full-time at a funeral home, so, you know, daytime is not, not, not going to be the best time for him to respond. And that's Michael Thomas. He's, again, coming from Williams, Williams County. He was over there for 20 plus years, and he just recently left. The other gentleman, his name is Andrew McDougall. He is from Antwerp. He just finished the advanced course, took his national registry and passed. And he had told me while he was in class, he had asked if there was any chance of him coming, you know, if there was anything available, and I said, yeah, absolutely, so. Done bringing him as well. He's, he works Ryan Fire, and obviously he runs with Antwerp as well. But those are the two names that I have for you tonight.
As mayor, I'm recommending re-certifying Michael C. Thomas and then Andrew McDougall with their higher levels, so.
Thank you, Mr. [inaudible].
Okay.
Roll call.
Bailey.
Yes.
Eglin.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
And last but not least, this week is National EMS Week, so I would like to thank all the current and former EMS workers here in the village. They, especially in the past year, they've had to, we've had a lot of roadblocks thrown up at us, and I think we've overcome them in a very positive way. It could have went easily the other way, but we've overcome them, and, and I just want to say thank you, so.
Take the cookies.
No.
The peanut butter.
Everybody's allergic.
The cookie, the cookie for them?
First, I see where you had the trucks serviced.
Yes.
And that's great, to see that you're keeping up with that.
Yeah.
Because they think that for way behind you right before you.
Yeah, I, I I would be remiss if I didn't have them done, because if I have, if I don't have the, if I don't get those maintenance on a frequent basis, and then I come over here and say, oh, yeah, by the way, this broke, you guys, there's gonna be six, seven of you looking at me going, why didn't you get this done? So, yeah, I, I, it's, it's, it's cheaper to get it maintenance than, and then come back to you and say, hey, something broke. You know, because then you guys can sit there and go, yeah, he's been doing the maintenance, so.
Yeah, thank you to all EMTs and EMS personnel during this week, and not just this week, but, you know, everybody with EMS Fire and especially EMS this time of year, we recognize their services.
Especially the EMS this time of year really recognize our services. Any other questions for Bruce?
What'd you decide with Abby's position? Are you gonna repost it? I, I know that you were thinking about yes, thinking about no. I was just curious what you landed on.
So Cheryl and I have been having some discussions about this. You know, we're still trying to, trying to decide. Abby is actually, Abby is actually coming back June 9th. I've got her, I've got her scheduled from June 9th through the rest of June now. I've also told her that if something changes, you know, just to let me know, okay? Because like if, you know, she passes her test and, you know, has to start up there, you know, I'll, I'll make adjustments as needed. At this point, you know, at, at this point, I've also gotta start thinking about the other person that's getting ready to retire. And from the sounds of it, it sounds like he's probably going to wait until the end of the year. But he's kind of up in the air too because, because with retirement, there's a, the whole Medicare, Medicaid thing that he's trying to factor in and so, so there's probably going to be two positions that, you know, and like you said, I don't want to take a step backwards, you know? I, I, I think in the past year, I fought too hard to, to get where we're at and I don't want, I don't want to take two steps back. So, you know, and it all depends upon what Cheryl and I can come up with as far as, you know, money. Because I, I do realize it costs, you know, to have, to have those full timers. But, you know, at the same time, we can't always rely on the part timers, you know, to, to cover the needed spots, so.
You have a question for Bruce? Very good, thanks Bruce.
Yep.
Appreciate it. We are down to fiscal. Cheryl?
The funds status report, just know that that eight million is pulled away because of Defiance Avenue number one. That is going to be paying a lot of the store fund without any help. However, in the cash summary by fund, if you, I'm pretty happy with that one. What came in and what went out are almost a wash. That's good. And the last thing I have is the police department pay in report and if you notice, that Echo got another donation. So he's running right along. She doesn't spend much money, just for food. All I have. And he's been busy this year too.
Any questions for Cheryl? It's my turn. Like I said, we've been working again with the committee and everything and different committee personnel. 150 assessment tenials keep moving forward. It's June 5th, 6th and 7th again. I want to thank everybody for working on that. Some brochures are coming out. You see some signs out there, but encourage people to come and attend and be a part of it. So it's a special day or weekend for the village and celebrating its heritage and everything. And then I want to congratulate the class of 2025. Graduation, I believe, is this coming Sunday, 2:00 correct?
8:00 at the school. I wish them well and blessings for their future endeavors for that class.
And all the teachers and staff to make our school special for those students and everything and moving forward. Like I said, the splash pad was open. They had a little ribbon cutting ceremony and turned out real nice and we're happy. It's great to ask that for our community. Memorial Day, this coming Monday, May 26th, parade lineup will be at the American Legion. They're gonna line up at 9:30. Parade kicks off at 10:00. I know the fire department, police department, EMS, they've all been part of that over the years, the veterans, people supporting the part of that. And again, it, it starts there at the American Legion, goes up High Street, Main, and then ends up at the Forest Home Cemetery. So be a part of that in our community and heritage and then memorialization of the fallen veterans in our community. And on behalf of that, I want to, the Village of Hicksville, thank you to all military personnel and civil service personnel who protect our country each and every day, especially those that have given their lives in the line of duty in country. We thank you and your families for their service and we honor them and what they have done for our community and our country. So thank you for that, so that's all I have.
Cory, have you heard anything, anything about any properties or anything?
Nothing new to report. I'm hoping to have one on Thursday from one entity. The other entity is still reviewing.
What's, what's happened, it's taken so long to review?
I knew I'd tell you.
They've been sitting on it for a month.
I'm maybe.
I'll second that.
Third.
Roll call.
Bailey?
That's you, Marty. Yes, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Eggway?
Yes.
Martin?
Yeah.
Miller?
Yes.
Thank you for coming tonight and everybody have a happy new year.
Merry Christmas.